Recording in progress. Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 17th. It's the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I will request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yarenz Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Welcome. We are glad you're here, whether you're in person, sitting in the chambers, or whether you are listening in. We are in a hybrid format. As always, we want to thank the staff for the incredible work that they do every single day to keep our city running so beautifully. There's always so much going on in San Rafael, and I wanted to highlight just a few things. Two weeks ago, I thought it was last week, but it's actually two weeks ago, we launched the Mobile Crisis Team, SAFE, which is an acronym for Specialized Assistance for Everyone. This is modeled on a proven successful program that's in Oregon as well as in the North Bay. The team will address crisis response, prevention, and intervention for the most vulnerable community members who are experiencing mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and homelessness. San Rafael's program will integrate very well with the county program. They also have a mobile crisis program. Working together, we are connecting more people with the services they need. Special appreciation to Chief Spiller and his team for bringing that to our community. Also, looking ahead, or looking ahead this week, Earth Day is this weekend. There are several events that are coming up around that. And I bring up both what we did two weeks ago and what's coming up this week, because if you want to be in the know, go ahead and be sure to subscribe to Snapshot. That is our city manager newsletter. Comes out every other week. Yep. And it's where we talk about events that are coming up, everything from ribbon cuttings to Earth Day, as well as reporting out on the city council. So, very easy. Go to the city of San Rafael website, put Snapshot in the search engine, and then you can sign up, and you will know what is going on in our fantastic city. Before I turn to the city clerk, I'd like to include a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the present-day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you for being here. I'll turn to the city clerk. He'll share how people can participate this evening on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171, and use the meeting ID 860-619-05675, and pressing *9 to raise their hand for comment, or they can watch directly through Zoom and using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org. And displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though you're not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell you live in, or if you're from outside of Centerfell. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We start our meetings with open time for public expression. This is the time with anything that you would like to speak to the council about that is not on tonight's agenda. Now is your moment. So I'm looking around the chambers to see if anyone has anything to say. Not seen anyone in the room. Is there anyone virtually?
I'm seeing no hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public expression time and bring it to the city manager for his report. City Manager Schutz.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. City Council, I do have a few upcoming event announcements. The first one is I just wanted to briefly talk about the city council's goals and objectives process, which is coming up. The council did, two years ago, a two-years goals and objectives. And so now it's time to do the next two-year document. And that's going to happen over a series of meetings, and I just wanted to describe them for our community so they could participate as they'd like. And just as a quick background, what it is, is the document that's setting kind of the staff work plan, kind of the big-picture work plan for the next couple of years. And we build our budget as related to the goals and objectives. And in general, they follow the four key policy areas that the council has set, which are housing and homelessness, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, sustainability, climate change, and disaster preparedness. And the fourth one is economic growth. And city service areas, in addition to those four key policy areas, are covered in this goals and objectives document. So we're going to follow a process that the council has followed in the past on these. There will be an off-site study session, which is pretty informal, and just an opportunity to work off of a first draft and think about what should be in there and what should be added or removed or changed. And the council certainly looks for community input in that process. That's going to be May 8th, so that's coming up. We will be announcing the location this week. We're just nailing down the final room so we can spread the word about that. But that'll be May 8th, an off-site study session. And then May 15th, here in the city council chambers, it'll be on the regular city council meeting. Still not final, still an opportunity for the community to weigh in and make any comments. The council will be looking at it there as well. In preparation of where it ultimately gets approved, is as a part of the annual budget document, which would be in one of our June city council meetings, the first or third meeting in June. So there's a couple chances where it starts off as a first draft and then kind of works its way more and more final as we get close to the annual budget being approved. And in addition to the goals and objectives around those key policy areas, we're also looking at an update on the performance metrics that the council had built in the last two-year cycle. So we'll be taking a look at those as well, both at the May 8th and the May 15th session. So that's just a preview of what's coming, and we will be sure to advertise all of those through all of our normal website and social media and every way that we advertise meetings. And then just a couple things this week. We have around Earth Day. I mentioned these before, but I have a little bit more detailed information this time. We have on Friday, the downtown clean and green for Earth Day, which includes the West End area, and is from 10:00 to noon, kind of cleaning up the downtown and working with downtown merchants in the Business Improvement District and the Chamber of Commerce. The meeting place is going to be the main city plaza, Rafael Town Center, 1,004th Street, to check in and pick up supplies. So that's Friday. And then on Saturday, we have a number of cleanups throughout the community in general from 9:00 to 12:00, but some of them are a little different hours, so it's good to check the website, which I'll give. But the meetup locations for these now are Surf Sports 101, Shoreline Path between Pickleweed, behind Pickleweed Park, Shoreline Path near Target, the Terre Lende Community Garden, and Sun Valley Elementary. So there's multiple options throughout San Rafael. And the best place to find out more and to register for these things is the city's website, which is citiesanrafel.org, and then slash events is the quickest way to get to these events and other events that are going on in the city. So I just wanted to fill in everyone on these upcoming meetings, on the goals and objectives, and then also some Earth Day opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues for their reports. I'll start with the Vice Mayor Yarenz Galati.
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended, you already described the San Rafael Alternative Response Resource. I attended with also Mayor and Councilmember Kurtz, the SAFE Team ribbon cutting. And then the next day, I attended the East San Rafael Working Group Meeting, and it was really nice because we have Sergeant Rob Cleland talking about the San Rafael Police Department, different topics, but he definitely touched on the new SAFE program. So that was actually very well received, and they had some really great questions. Also, last week, I had the chance to be the moderator for, you know, a chat called, like, Women Run for Office. We had, like, the State Controller Malia Coin was one of the panelists, Supervisor Mary Sackett, Novato Councilmember Rachel Farag, and Board Member Samantha Ramirez. So it was really great to encourage more women to run for office. So I also attended a meeting with Mayor Kate about the City of San Rafael and County Marine Reusable Footwear Ordinance and another working group around EV charging. So that's my report. Like, I'll be, like, in Pickleweed on Saturday, so if you would like to join us to do a cleanup, I'd love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I attended a meeting of the Central Marine Sanitation Agency Board. We addressed several routine matters. The most fun I've had all week, though, were there are two different opportunities. I did a ride-along with the police department. Thank you very much to all the members of the police department who were so courteous and so patient with me and all my questions. And then I got to really get out in the world. I went to the Public Works, got a great tour of their building, saw the awesome sign shop, and was very impressed with the mechanic shop, where I saw one of the CMSAs truck, you know, the truck that Chris loves? It was up on the thing. Very cool. So had a great time with Public Works. Thank you very much for all the courtesies I was extended during my visit. It was very educational to see the bathrooms that needed to be cleaned at the Pickleweed Park. Very enlightening. I also attended a meeting of the Board of the San Rafael Library Foundation. The video is almost ready for prime time. Some of you have seen it. It's looking good. So we're very excited about that. And finally, today, I met with the representatives of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, John Webster, and their advisor to discuss general issues of interest.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. MWPA meetings, Marine Wildfire Prevention Authority, are deep right now in the planning for the work plan. So thank you, Chief White, for all the work that's happening there. And I also completed my ride-alongs with the San Rafael Fire Department and Department of Public Works. And in both situations, it's really great to have a feet-on-the-ground or behind-the-scenes look and the impact of policy decisions on how that, you know, really plays out in the day-to-day. So very, very helpful, especially as we're going into our strategic planning and budgeting season. And then I also attended the Marine Economic Forum for their annual meeting, sort of the state of where we're at right now in the economy.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one report of a meeting which happened on Thursday, April 13th. It was the Economic Development Subcommittee Meeting, in which the main event was the unveiling of the Draft Economic Development Strategic Plan, or EDSP. The city had engaged Cosmont last year and has been working side by side with the city. Special thanks to the Economic Development Department, led by Director Hinkle and his mighty staff, for engaging with the community and using data to help inform. Cosmont does a lot of work throughout the state of California, mostly, helping communities like San Rafael become even more economically developed. So the draft plan is available on the city website for viewing. The easiest way to get there, at least easy for me, is just go to your favorite search engine, say City of San Rafael. Just go straight to the economic development part of the site, and you can find the draft plan. So I would definitely take a look at it if you're interested, but it does talk about steps that we can do going forward to help increase our vitality. Thank you.
Thank you. And all the meetings that I attended, I attended with another council member. I think they've all been listed already. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz, for letting me join you on the DPW ride-along, and Director Miller for driving us around. I concur that the ride-alongs are really important, as Councilmember Bushy mentioned, to actually see our assets that we have in our city and to see the employees and everything that they're doing in terms of our infrastructure. So those have been really important. I think all of the council will be doing ride-alongs with DPW, Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department. So thank you to my colleagues for making the extra time, and of course, to both the chiefs for enabling that to happen. I think it's important conversations and important to see that. So with that, I will see if there's any comment on the city manager or council member reports. I don't see anyone in the chambers who would like to make a comment. Is there anyone virtually?
I do see one hand raised.
Okay.
Thanks, Ava Crisanti. I just wanted to point out that the politeness noted, if I understood it correctly, Councilmember Bushy was praising the police for their politeness during her ride-along. I hope I heard that correctly. I did want to point out the stark contrast between how Bushy was treated and continues to be treated by police and how the gardener known as Mateo was treated by your police department. And that's very stark. I'd also like to point out that I was up at the coroner's office, and I noticed that a death that occurred at your SSA/interment camp, the one that the police were running, that had no bathroom showers, no hot or cold running water, you know, I mean, people got very, very sick there. It was located right underneath a freeway, and there was never any health inspection, and there still isn't any investigation of, you know, your liability on that. I do want to point out that the death that occurred there on December 9th, 2021, is miscategorized in terms of location at the coroner's office. And I'd like to ask the mayor and the city council to ask for a correction in the coroner's logbook. The location of the death is reported in the coroner's logbook as Friends Residential Tent, San Rafael. But that obscures the fact that the person who died on December 9th, 2021, who was marked in that coroner's logbook, died in your SSA, in the cold. And after being held there for an excruciatingly long period of time, no one should have been there for even a minute. I'll be writing more about these discrepancies in...
I see no more hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that councilmember would like to hold on the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Are there any comments on the public on the consent calendar, that is, item A through G? Is there anyone in the chambers? Not seeing anyone on the chambers. Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on the consent agenda?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close it and bring it back for motion. I did want to highlight, all the items on the consent agenda are important, and there's a special one on there, 4C, which is a grant award from the State of California Arts Commission. Almost $700,000 that the city will receive from the state of California. When we received the district designation about five or six years ago, I think we got $5,000. So we are really happy the direction that that went, and I just wanted to highlight that. I didn't want to pull it, but I did want to highlight that will really be phenomenal for our downtown. So with that, I would request a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yarenz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. We will move to our public hearing. We have paramedic tax rate for fiscal year 2023-24. I see that Thomas Wong has joined us. Welcome, Thomas. No, I know. It's tricky. No worries. No worries. Yes, we can see it.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. My name is Thomas Wong, and I am the senior management analyst at the Fire Department. I am joined this evening by Chief White and members of the Finance Department, who will be available along with myself for questions following this presentation. This evening, we are presenting a public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance increasing within the voter-approved limit the paramedic services special tax. The paramedic services special tax, or paramedic tax, was first approved by voters in 1979 for residential properties only. In 1988, voters approved an extension along with a new per-square footage tax on non-residential structures. The original ordinance establishes the authority of the city council to set the tax rates within the voter-approved limits based on the recommendation by the city manager. Along with San Rafael, the paramedic tax is also applied to properties in County Service Areas 13, 19, and the Marinwood Community Services District. In addition to San Rafael, the San Rafael Fire Department provides paramedic service to these three service areas. The paramedic program is a 24/7/365 Emergency Medical Service, or EMS, provided by the San Rafael Fire Department. The program funds paramedics on every fire engine at all six stations, as well as ambulances at four of them. Stations 52 and 57 have dedicated firefighter paramedics that full-time staff an ambulance, and Stations 55 and 56 are cross-staffed, meaning staff drive the ambulance when called upon. All medical calls are responded to by an engine and ambulance. By calling both an engine and ambulance out on every medical call for service, response time is reduced, and additional personnel are available without delay in the event of patient or patients need additional care or service. Average response time for EMS calls in San Rafael are under seven minutes, and the department currently responds to over 8,700 calls for medical service a year. Here is the last five years' worth of EMS-related calls. Of the 8,700 EMS calls in 2022, nearly 6,300 had medical merit, meaning our personnel at least conducted an evaluation. These calls are represented by both blue and red lines. The blue lines denote transports to hospitals, and the red lines represent calls that did not require a transport. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, call volumes to transports were on the rise. The pandemic and subsequent shelter-in-place order drastically reduced calls for service, but since then, call volumes are back to and exceeding pre-pandemic levels. We expect medical calls for service to continue this upward trend, in part due to the increased number of skilled nursing and assisted living facilities and future projected residential developments. The paramedic tax funds 60% of the total expected EMS program revenues of $8.9 million. The remaining 40% of revenue comes from third-party billing, typically insurance, and grants from the state and federal government. The paramedic tax provides an EMS service for all residents of San Rafael, regardless of income and insurance. The city does not currently balance bill residents, which means that the city does not send a bill to any resident within the paramedic tax area for any amount owed that is not covered by insurance. This is in recognition of the paramedic tax paid by all residents and provides a great community-wide benefit. The paramedic program revenue also helps pay for 18 of the 62 full-time equivalent paramedics on staff, as well as capital projects, vehicles, equipment, and supplies. Here are the current and proposed rates by service area. The only proposed increase is for residential living units within the city of San Rafael. The proposed increase of $4 per living unit resulting in a new yearly tax rate of $108 per year, per unit. All other areas, including non-residential structures in San Rafael, are already taxed at the maximum rate allowed by law and are proposed to remain the same. Projected revenue increases of about $91,000 are expected if approved, which will result in an average rate increase of 1.3% per year since 2012. Staff recommends council introduce the ordinance amending the paramedic service special tax rate. And I want to thank you for your time and allowing me the opportunity to present, and that concludes this presentation. And I want to thank you for your time and allowing me the opportunity to present, and that concludes this presentation.
Thank you, Thomas. I will turn to my colleagues for questions. Vice Mayor, I'll start with you.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bushy.
I do have questions.
Go ahead.
And they're basically the same questions I think I asked last year, but let's see what we can do this year. Maybe the answers will be different. So, these rates were adopted in, or the statutes were adopted, the ordinances were adopted in 2006. They were approved, so 17 years ago, and they included escalations. And we've hit the cap in all of them, right?
There was a cap and the escalations are not automatic. They are recommended to and approved by the city council, but we have met the cap now.
Okay, so we're capped out in everything. What is the termination date for this tax? Or is, I guess my first question should be, is there one?
Yeah, this, this tax does not sunset, so it will be capped and held at this rate.
Indefinitely.
Yes.
Okay, so if we want to, as of now, if we want to increase the paramedic tax, it will, it will require a vote of the people.
Correct. A two-thirds vote for each area. The county service areas, Marinwood and the City of San Rafael would all have to vote independently.
And do we have any plan for when we might do that or what might trigger us to, to embark on such an effort?
Sure. I think when we look at, you know, we have to look at our projected budget and revenues and when the time comes where our revenues are, don't meet our expenditures, that would probably be the time that the city council would consider that. But that would need to be done in conjunction with those other, with the county and Marinwood as well at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Two questions. Is, is there any speculation at this point? It would have to be speculation, but is there any belief that the safe team might have an impact on that upward trend as far as first response goes for, for an ambulance roll?
Yeah, I think that the hope is that we will see some impacts. We probably, we might see more impacts to that red line, which was the non-transport. But there definitely may be cases where somebody might need a transport, but not necessarily the advanced life service there. So we're hopeful that there may be some positive effects that come from that and we'll continue to monitor that to make sure to see if those are, those come true.
Thank you. My second question, so I'll do a lead up and then ask the question. First, it's a great public benefit we have where we're not charging residents directly, that it's really what insurance can bear. Plus, we, we take on the remainder. So it's a great public benefit. Can you maybe describe how other communities manage that? How different is our experience here versus municipalities that don't provide that public benefit?
Sure. That, that benefit is provided throughout the county, so it's something that all other jurisdictions do in Marin County, which is a great benefit. Just from what I read and what I've heard, there are communities that don't do that and communities that do go after patients for medical debt that can have a, you know, real impact on their livelihoods and a real equity impact. So that does happen in other communities. We are fortunate that here in Marin County and specifically San Rafael, that we have the ability and this paramedic tax to help offset that so that we don't have to incur or, or put debt on those that can't afford to pay for medical service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you, Thomas, for the update. I do have a couple of questions. In terms of the assisted living facilities, we have a number of new facilities, which is fantastic, coming online. But I'm concerned and what your thoughts are in terms of planning and projecting out are, with the increase in the tax and the reality of the fact that so many new ones are going to come online and if the current trend of the department supporting these calls with both a paramedic and a fire engine, what does that mean holistically for the next couple of years? And then it sort of relates back to Councilmember Bushy's question in terms of, are we going to have enough revenue to support that?
Sure. There, there's no doubt that senior facilities and skilled nursing facilities have a direct impact on, on our services. About 12 to 15% of our total calls for emergency medical service are to those type of facilities, which is a, you know, almost one in seven calls for a population that is significantly smaller than that. So we do expect continued impacts to our services as more of these businesses come online. They do as well pay paramedic tax. They are charged at a commercial rate of 14 cents a square foot. So there is some small financial impact there. But we are currently working on a emergency medical service study that is looking at alternative ways and options that we can prepare for these future impacts that we know are coming. And that is, we're right in about the middle of that. And so as soon as we have some results from that, we'd be very happy to share, you know, what some of our options are moving forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Another follow-on question, it may not be directly related to this point, is around recruitment, recruitment and retaining. And I'm wondering, I know that's been a conversation across, I could see Chief White sitting there. I know this has been a question across, I mean, everywhere the state. If any of this revenue goes towards those activities or is it strictly for the supports that we're seeing today?
I'll speak directly to the fiscal part and I'll let Chief White kind of maybe speak to some of, some of those other challenges. But yes, the, this paramedic tax and the program itself does help support and pay for paramedics and as well as incentives for them to work here in San Rafael. We did recently conduct a lateral program to try to incentivize new firefighter paramedics that are working at other agencies to join our agencies. That was successful and some of the funding for those positions comes directly from this paramedic tax.
Great. Thank you. Chief.
Welcome, Chief. Would you like to add?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and the council members. Just to piggyback on to what Thomas had to state. From a recruitment standpoint, we are experiencing some challenges, not just locally, not just regionally, but statewide. And it's actually extending across the country. And I think there are a variety of reasons why those impacts are occurring right now. There's fewer individuals, for example, who are actually becoming qualified to become advanced life support trained individuals within the state. Just a couple of years ago, as an example, we had 2,000 candidates who had received certification for advanced life support. That number has decreased by roughly 75%. And so agencies are now offering lateral processes far more than they had in the past, trying to draw experienced members from other agencies to join their agencies. And so it's kind of a downward spiral, but also a, a back and forth between agencies where we're competing for the same individuals. But we're hoping to reverse that trend with some of the things we're, we're working on in the future regarding young women's camps, more active outreach with fire explorer programs and other things that get us directly into the community and encourage the youth to look at the fire service as a viable option for their future careers.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Got any other questions?
My colleagues asked excellent questions. I just had one follow-up on the funding. I think we are all really paying attention to that. So the 14 cents, it looks like that's also the ceiling as well for the 14 cents for the commercial?
That's correct.
And when compared to other jurisdictions of our size, is 14 cents, is that a typical amount, less, more than?
Yeah, that, that's a typical amount. It's maybe a little on the higher side compared to some other jurisdictions in Marin County. But both the residential and the commercial rates are some of the higher rates in Marin County currently.
Okay. Well, it makes sense given the, the call volume. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I will turn to the public, see if there's any questions or comments on this item. If anyone in the chambers would like to comment? Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on the paramedic tax rate item?
I'm seeing no hands raised and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council members for their comments and then ultimately a motion. I will start with the Vice Mayor. Comments on this item, please.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I have always said that I think this is one of the most amazing services that we have in San Rafael. When I immigrated here, I can tell you, it's a personal story, but my father passed away when I was 11. He was 38 from a heart attack. And I think if he would have been here, at least he would have had the chance. So I think we are so fortunate and I fully endorse.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, clearly we need to do this. I am a little bit concerned about the timing that we need to continue because the costs are going to continue to rise. And if we're going to, the question around the recruitment and retaining, I think are directly correlated to the fact that it's getting more expensive and we need to continue to do more. So absolutely appreciate the fact that we need to do this, but I think we need to sooner than later think about what do we need to do going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I concur with how Councilmember Kurtz characterized it. I, I think that this is a well-timed increase. I know that this is at the discretion of the city manager to bring it before us. I think it's the correct thing to utilize the, the ceiling that we are now at to make sure that we continue to deliver services. Look forward to the study. Look forward to understanding timing on when we need to start making that move toward what a two-thirds vote can do and make sure that we are explaining it well to the community, to make sure that everyone understands that when a call for service is made, it's for every single individual and that I think is a level of standard that we want to support. So thank you for bringing it before us. I'll be happy to make the motion and/or vote for it, or, and vote for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I concur with Councilmembers Kurtz and Hill, and I support the measure and will be happy to vote for it.
Thank you and thank you, Thomas. Excellent presentation. I feel like we have another year because we just, obviously if this vote goes through, we will approve it for another year and we are going to run into some financial implications in the years to come. And I absolutely agree with Councilmember Kurtz that we're going to have to figure out strategically what that looks like with the coming online of the additional senior assisted facilities. We'll have the data that's going to be collected and I think that will really inform how the services are being used. We want to have the best, fastest responses using the limited resources we have in terms of our firefighter personnel. So I look forward to future conversations about it. I, I think that we will have one in a year or two about how, how to get it on the ballot. So thank you for that excellent presentation. Thank you, Chief, for the additional information. I know Councilmember Hill offered to request a motion and it's very specific. Let's see. City Clerk, how do you want us to do this one? Do you want Councilmember Hill to read the introduction of the ordinance or just the waive the further reading sentence?
Yeah, the motion would be to waive the further reading of the ordinance and refer it by title only.
I move that we waive further reading of the ordinance and refer it to, refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will request that the city clerk reads the title of the ordinance prior to the vote.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the City of San Rafael, amending the paramedic services special tax rates within the voter approved limit, commencing with fiscal year 2023, 2024, for residential units and non-residential structures in the City of San Rafael, County Service Area Number 13, County Service Area Number 19, and the Marinwood Community Services District.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adan Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I see Director Kufa joining us. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm Catherine Kufa, the Library and Recreation Director for the City of San Rafael. And we're here to talk to you tonight about a, the culmination of a more than year-long process of the Citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I'm going to introduce Lauren Ivy Thomas from RHAA Landscape Architects, who has been the lead consultant on this project and will be kind of doing the bulk of the presentation tonight. We also have Taffian Rice Evans in the, who will be joining us from EPS, who did the financial analysis for the plan and will be presenting that portion of, of the presentation later this, later this evening.
Thank you. Welcome, Lauren. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again. Good evening. All right. All right. So this is our second council presentation of the CPRMP. It's a little easier to say, the Citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan, also known as the CPRMP. Tonight, I'll briefly go over what is in the actual master plan, what you have not yet seen before, which is the Recreation and Operation Recommendations, as well as the Financial Assessment and Planning component, which Taffian is here to speak to, and then next steps for this process. So the draft master plan contains six chapters, the first of which is the executive summary, typical of master planning, reviewing the overall master plan, what's in it and the scope. There's an asterisk here just to cue in what was explicitly presented at the last council meeting. Then we have our introduction, which introduces the planning process. It discusses key players, the community outreach components, our steering committee members, and a review of relevant planning efforts to make sure that we're building on existing planning efforts to build this master plan. Then the master plan goes into the city's existing framework. This is a review of this city's existing parks and recreation system, including the city's recreation programs, as well as the recreation facilities. We've previously gone over the park system and park and recreation facilities in various other meetings. And this chapter also has a demographic profile of the community. This is important so that we know who the, the recreation system is serving and what it has to begin with. Chapter four is the Needs Assessment, which looks at the city's supply of recreation amenities, the demand for recreation services, which we've seen through our community outreach process, and then identifying where those gaps are and how the city can meet them. This moves us into chapter five, where we discuss the goals, policies, and actions of the master plan. This creates a language framework to guide the recommendations. Then the recommendations themselves. This chapter is quite, quite dense. It includes recommendations for every park site and every recreation facility site, as well as policy recommendations for programs and operations. And then it does include, include costs for planning purposes. The final chapter is the Implementation Chapter, Chapter Six, which goes over the Action Plan, which is the prioritization of the recommendations. We discuss how these recommendations have become prioritized compared to one another. The Action Plan, as we see it, for near, medium, and long-term implementation. And then the Funding Plan, which we will discuss at more length this evening. All right. So we'll go into what is new, what hasn't been presented so far, and what will be presented tonight for the master plan. And that is the Recreation and Operation Recommendations. So the last meeting, we presented the recommendations for the parks and recreation facilities. But it's important that this master plan also have recommendations that are more policy-oriented and directed at the city's Recreation and Childcare Division, as well as the Maintenance Operations, to continue to service these amenities well. The major ones here that I would like to highlight is creating a programming plan for the city's Child Care and Recreation Division, and this will really help frame this division's delivery of services moving forward and to kind of create a concise and efficient process for that. We also have recommendations for Recreation Facility Operation. As you know, this master plan utilizes a report from MAC5 that identifies the facility deficiencies in all of the city's recreation facilities. And so we encourage the city to continue to use this plan to identify deferred maintenance and utilize it moving forward as funds are available. And then finally, recommendations oriented towards operations and maintenance. This master plan had the awesome capacity to work with April, April Miller and Department of Public Works, and we worked closely with her to acknowledge how these two divisions, departments can work well together and provide recommendations that relate to the operation and management of these spaces. And then the big one, the Financial Assessment and Planning portion of this master plan. So I'll present the beginning of this and I'll reintroduce Taffian Rice Evans. He is from Economic Plan and Planning Systems, one of the subconsultants on this project. I do also want to mention, I forgot to mention earlier Ballard King. They assisted us directly in creating the Recreation and Operation Recommendations. They're consultants that specialize in recreation planning. All right. So this table right here shows that we are proposing nearly $18.3 million in park recommendations alone. This is inclusive of a 30% contingency. But what is not included in this table are the Recreation Facility Recommendations, which are about 30%. which are about $3 million, including that 30% contingency. The reason why we are including those separately in the master planning process is because we understand that there's potentially a different funding pot for those recommendations, Measure A versus building funds. And the master plan is focused on funds that will be available more towards Measure A, which Typhian can speak to. It is very important to note that these, these are planning, high level cost estimates. They do not account for escalation over time. They do not account for projects that do need additional planning. Some recommendations in our master plan will require further refinement, either by additional consultants to come and create prepared documents or internal work within the city's Child Care and Recreation Division or Department of Public Works. That said, I shall give it to Typhian, and Typhian, just let me know when you're ready to move through the slides.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thanks for having me. Yeah, so as Lauren mentioned, we have a set of cost estimates to kind of guide in some ways our questions about how much funding do we need for, as part of this plan? I think I want to point out a couple of numbers on the screen here. As Lauren said, that the number will grow over time as more plans are developed for new parks. But the cost estimates we have so far are $18.3 million in total. And then focusing in on the near term, we can see it's about $11.5 million. That's the kind of the near term cost of implementing the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. What's also very important to know is within that $11.5 million is a substantial investment, a $9 million investment in the Pickleweed Park improvements collectively. And on a funding basis, that's, that's an area where you've already done a lot of work funding wise. And so you have an active grant application in, a federal grant application in for that. And you also have matching general, City General Fund, funds to help support that investment. So my, you know, all of those $11.5 million, about $9 million, it will hopefully be covered by these other funding sources, leaving you with a kind of a funding need that we focused in on of about $2.5 million in the near term. So that's, that was on the cost side. Next slide, please, Lauren. So then we worked, you know, with your staff to understand the way in which you currently fund your parks, both on the capital side and the maintenance side. And as is common in most cities, on the maintenance side, you're generally relying on your general fund to pay for the operations and maintenance. Many cities don't have, you know, or struggle, everybody struggles more on the capital side. But you do have the Measure A funding, which has been an important source of funding for your parks and recreation. It's a flexible funding source. You can use it for capital, capital improvements. You can use it for operations and maintenance improvements. It was recently, you know, approved, reapproved by the voters. It's in place for, reapproved for about nine years in 2022. So we know we have that funding source coming in. On average, it brings in, was expected to bring in about $550,000 a year. So that's one kind of key funding source you have in your current toolkit, so to speak. You also do have a kind of a small array of parks, taxes, and fees charged on development. They don't bring in a huge amount of money, but they maybe bring in $15,000 or so every year. So collectively, from those two sources, you know, in a kind of a planning level basis, you have about $565,000 of kind of annual funding available, potentially to pay for these park improvements we chatted about. And as we mentioned earlier, and I know the Pickleweed Park Grant is a big one, but you've also successfully pursued other grants in the past, and I know will continue to look to pursue more grants as they become available. So on the next slide, we wanted just to think through, really focused on the near term, like if we have a $2.5 million need, you know, and we think about the funding source, the existing funding sources we just discussed, you know, how does that play out on a kind of a time basis, if you will? And we did look at two different scenarios, because under one scenario, you basically put all of your Measure A funding towards park capital improvements. There's also the possibility that if you need some of that money for operations and maintenance, then you have less available for the park capital improvements. We just kind of wanted to think through this from two different lenses. Under the, under the scenario where you're able to invest all of your Measure A funding in park capital improvements, over the course of the next five years, you'll end up with about $2.8 million in funding from Measure A. If we, however, take about half of that funding and put it into operations and maintenance, you end up with about $1.5 million over the next five years. So in the next slide, we just try to bring it all together and recognize that, you know, we've kind of focused on, because we have the best cost estimates, and the near term is always a little clearer than the medium and long term. We're trying to close a $2.5 million gap. I think under the scenario one, where we put all of our measuring money into capital improvements, you know, we have more than enough to close that out within five years. Under scenario two, again, where we were putting some money towards O and M, we basically, we have about $1.5 million over that five year period. So either we have to, you know, pursue grants or other funding sources, or it just takes a little bit longer to get all those near term, near term improvements completed. So that's the kind of context and the picture we wanted to paint in terms of cost and funding matchup. I think overall, I think that, you know, the broader question is, you do have, you know, a solid funding source and a funding stream. You do have the ability to come close to closing your, your, I guess, fully investing in your near term improvements in the next five or so years. So one approach is just to basically focus on your existing funding sources, you know, do what you can incrementally. We think that it matches up pretty well with your plan. But of course, there's always options to explore new special taxes typically would be voter approved. So you could obviously go out and try to seek more money for parks. Though that's, you know, that obviously takes you into a whole different, different set of processes and different set of questions. And that was where I think my presentation ends.
Thank you. I know we're going to ask questions, but one that's burning for me is the timeframe of a near term. I know you kept saying near term, and then you said five years. Could you just tell us what that is?
Zero to five years.
Okay. I just want to clarify. Sometimes it's zero to one or two. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Typhian.
Thank you, Typhian. That moves us on to the next steps of the master plan, which would be the, in the staff reports, recommendation to adopt the resolution adopting the Citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you. We know that the plan, you very much consolidated your presentation because the plan is much bigger than that. So, so thank you. I'm sure there'll be questions from the council. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you so much for the plan and the reach out to the community is very exciting. I guess a question that I have is that we were talking about like the funding for the capital park versus maintenance. And I understand like using general funding for maintenance. When I'm thinking about it specifically, like Pickleweed Park and the bathrooms, I'm like, we can put more bathrooms, but I don't think that's going to change unless there is different maintenance. Or like Mayor Kate was, we had a conversation about like, what about those bathrooms that they can like reset on their own and they get all clean? So I don't know if you can speak a little bit around that? If there is, what's the balance on a project like that when you're adding more bathrooms? But if they are not maintained properly, nobody's really using them.
Right. So I can take a stab at that. And then we've also got Director Miller here, if she would like to add anything. So we did hear when we were doing the community engagement process, and we asked, what are the park improvements that you'd most like to see? One of the ones that came back quite high was improved maintenance, particularly around restrooms, litter, litter removal, things like that. And so I know that we have been in, talking with Public Works about, should we be allocating some of Measure A funds to maybe doing some additional contract maintenance? And I think in this near term, kind of the Measure A work plan that you'll see within the next couple of months or two, we decided not to include that this year. I think Director Miller and her team are going to look at options for kind of maybe some more creative staffing models where we do have, we might have maintenance workers that work over the weekend, because I know that's when we have the use, we could do an additional cleaning then, see how that works, kind of evaluate that, and then revisit next year. I know Director Miller and her team also have plans in the coming year to do more planning around this and more evaluation around what should those service levels be? And we can evaluate that as we move forward. I don't know if that's, that captured it or?
Yeah, that was a great answer. Director Miller, Director Miller of Public Works. Yeah, so we are definitely doing what Catherine explained. So we, we've put in our budget request for next year to add additional overtime so that our staff can work on the weekends to help clean restrooms. That's part of our budget request. And we have staff that's willing to do that, just to see how that goes, so that we, there's so many needs in the near term for capital improvements, some of which are safety issues. And so if we can find this balance, and we have staff who's willing to work on the weekends, and we can get that budget approved through our general fund, then that's what we recommend for the next couple, couple of years, that we can get ahead of these safety issues.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And the other one that I have is around the Childcare Division, and I know that there's always like a waitlist. So do we have any plans, you know, like for the after, after school programs that we have? Is there, I guess we are like, are we looking at keeping that the same number of spots that we have? Is that expanding? Is it shrinking? What's, what do you see?
Yeah. So we didn't, the childcare program was not included in the Park and Recreation Master Plan, so you won't see it in there. But I can speak to one of the, the challenges we have with, we have two, we have two challenges with capacity in the childcare programming. But a large one is space. So we have portables on school campuses that are licensed for a specific capacity, and we can't exceed that capacity. So that's kind of just an external constraint we have. We have worked with the school districts to get access to other classrooms, and they have been really willing to work with us on that. They do, there are growing competing needs on school campuses. So that's something we're continually working at and in communications with the school districts to look at that. And then staffing is also a challenge there, recruitment and retention of staff, to make sure we have certain ratios we have to, to meet. It is something we're looking at, and just even from a financial perspective, it's important. But there are, those are kind of the two big constraints on our size for, for childcare programming.
Thank you, because also childcare is like one of the basics for working families to be able to work. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for coming before us and doing the full readout. I read this draft plan from end to end. It's wonderful. Thank you for making sure that you're being so thorough. It was really wonderful to be able to read it and understand now, to engage the community by question, I have two questions. One is, and I had to ask this question offline because I couldn't get it straight. So I'm doing this to make sure everyone can, can hear about this. Can, can you differentiate between the facility recommendations and the park recommendations? Because I thought your answer offline was really helpful.
I mean, I'll take a stab. Catherine corrected. The facility versus the Recreation Operations Recommendations?
The park.
Versus the park. Okay. So the park recommendations are oriented towards the park sites. So the physical park sites and how do we improve those park sites? The Recreation Facility Recommendations are oriented towards the recreation facilities directly. So an example of that is Centerfell Community Center versus Albert Park.
Yeah, and I can follow it, because I know your specific question was about how we address the funding of those and kind of the financial planning, because the presentation you heard largely focused on the park improvements. And so the facility improvements, we do have an appendix F with a very detailed list of facility improvements and some budget estimates where we could get them. But we didn't do as detailed an analysis because the facility recommendations will be funded through the, the building fund typically. And with the, the building fund funds all city facilities, city hall, libraries, you know, public safety. And so there is a plan in the next year to do a facilities master plan. And these detailed recreation facility recommendations will be rolled into that plan and will be considered in the prioritization of funding through that. So that's, that's why we didn't go as into detail, because we don't quite have the full picture yet on how that, on how those recommendations stack up against other, others for the building funds.
So just to be accurate, we're not, we don't have an analysis to say whether or not we're going to, we are currently deficient on the facility analysis.
That's correct.
So that's forthcoming.
Yeah, that will be forthcoming.
Thank you. And then my, I noticed this, the, the policy recommendation for develop an asset inventory and management plan has a TBD, which is different than most of them that say not applicable. Can you elaborate a little bit more what we would expect in when we say develop asset inventory and management plan? When I, because one thing that drops into my head, and maybe you can disabuse me of it, is, is this a selection of now an asset management system? And if that, I'm going down a hole here, but does that roll into an asset management system that we would have for the city that we could have multi-use and shared services for?
Yeah, I can answer that. So in, in Public Works right now, our plan is, is we're gathering all of our inventory. So right now, we have an RFP out to, which will eventually come to council about figuring out what all of our inventory is on streets, like our signs, our striping, our streetlights. And so we're doing, we're doing some video analysis, like Google Cars around to get our inventory for that. So we also need to get all of our inventory for our buildings and our parks so that we have, we can put all of that into one big asset management software that can help us plan for the future and see where our deficiencies are. So that then we know, like, if we get half a million dollars a year in the building maintenance fund, you know, will that dig us out of our hole on deferred maintenance? Or how much do we need in order to finally get into the part where we're just maintaining and not just fixing things that are broken and reacting? So it's to come soon. It's part of, you know, you'll see with our goals and objectives what each of the department's goals are. But that's something that we're moving towards in Public Works.
So to clarify, the asset management system would be encompassing of all city assets, including park assets and potentially facility assets.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those your questions? Okay. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you for the update. I just want to do a little clarification. In terms of us moving forward tonight, it's approving the master plan, but not necessarily the conversation around the funding of what's near term, medium term, long term, and those actual dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct. The spending of any money or funds on this plan will come back on a project by project basis.
Okay. The table, the near term, medium term, long term table, where over half of it is near term, and it's zero to five years. And I'm sort of learning in, in city council time, zero to five years is like a blink. And so I am concerned about that. Recognizing even though we would, you know, be using a number of grants, which would probably be the next piece of that, if that table could be identified as potential grant, you know, grant funding that would be coming in or pulling out Pickleweed specifically. Because if you pull out Pickleweed, then it's pretty much near term, medium term, and long term are essentially the same amounts. Right? Okay. I'm getting nods out there. So, okay. So not really the question, but it was just really, just acknowledgement that, you know, the plan looks great. And I'm happy the financial conversation is going to come back later, because I do think the conversation, I appreciate everyone looking at the operations and maintenance piece. But during my ride along and seeing the new Lock Lowman area that's been done, and I mean, our parks are used, and they're used quite a bit. And so I'm concerned of the, the need for operations and maintenance is actually increasing. And so we do need to think about how to do that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, questions?
Yes, I have questions. And my questions are a sort of high level strategic perspective, and they're primarily focused on the funding plan. As a beginning point, it occurs to me that it's the, that there isn't a funding plan in there, that it's mostly a very detailed and thorough cost estimate. Can you help me? I guess my question is, what is the plan for, for funding? The discussion that you have shows Measure A at about roughly half a million dollars a year. We don't need any of that for our We don't need any of that for O and M, that we can basically do the near term, which is primarily deficiency improvements. And at the end of five years, we should have those done. But we will not put a dime towards any of our interim or long term goals. So how, what are the, what is the out year plan? Or is there not one?
You're talking about the like the medium and long term goals? Well, I think the the hope is that Measure A continues to be renewed. It's experienced very strong voter support in Marin throughout the two election cycles that it's been on the ballot. I know the county intends to continue to putting, put it up for renewal. And that, looking at the cost estimate for the mid and long term goals, it would get us a long way, if not all the way, towards funding those as well.
So the the plan is to use our Measure A funds to hit this this very detailed, very well analyzed on that list of projects. So that that is the plan?
Yes, currently. I think again, if if council were to decide that, you know, we really want to take on some of these expansion goals or there's, you know, we want to hit these targets faster. There are options for voter approved tax measures. Again, I think, you know, council would want to weigh those against all the other needs within the city as well as staff capacity. I think a little bit to maybe the question that Councilmember Kurtz didn't quite ask, but that we do, you know, staff capacity is another constraining factor in the ability to actually implement capital projects. So I I think we did, looking at the near term list, we do feel pretty comfortable that that is something, given funding and staff capacity, we can accomplish within the next five, maybe, maybe six, seven years, but within that more short term timeframe. But if we do want to take on more projects or speed up the timeline with which we'll get to the medium and long term, then that capacity becomes an issue as well as funding. So I think what we saw was that our current Measure A funding matches up well with our staff capacity on the engineering and capital side. So that felt like a good match for planning purposes. But if if we wanted to go faster or do something additional, yeah, I think we would need to look at a voter approved tax measure and staff capacity.
So is it a strategic conclusion that the funding available from Measure A, our existing staffing, and this plan all work well together for the foreseeable future?
Well put.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two follow up questions. Taikian had talked about the different options of expending the money or holding on to the money. My question is, in terms of going after state or federal grants, that to me would seem to be a component of that, of when we expend the money. Do you have, I don't know if you have any insight on that, but I think to even answer that question, that would be a necessary part to know, right? If we needed more upfront in order to get a match. Does that make sense? So let's say if we want to expend it all at once, it's 2.8 million. And we know that we can take 2 million of that right in the beginning and try to get a $2 million match. I guess it's, does that make sense? No, you're like, I'm not articulating that well.
I'm not sure I'm following.
So so when we have, so when we're looking at pickleweed and the grants that we have obtained, often there needs to be a city match having to do with those. So I'm wondering, when we look at the expenditure plan, is that being considered as we plan how we're going to do our funding plan?
Yeah, yes, it is. I mean, at the moment, the only match we're predicting is for the pickleweed project. And we have those funds identified. We are also pursuing additional grant opportunities to help with that match. However, we, the plan does not does not rely on additional grant funding. If we were to secure additional grants, that would just kind of free up funds for us to take on projects more quickly. I think, you know, the the one area that I can think of where we've hope there may be some grant funding is in irrigation, particularly around water efficiency and climate change. We don't know if that's going to happen. I think that that could, we may come to a point where we would say, okay, this is a really great grant opportunity. We're going to bump another project back a year and utilize those funds differently. But as those opportunities come, we can have those decisions. And that's part of the the goal with this master plan is to create that flexibility and that decision making kind of matrix for us.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent example. And there are going to be some pickleweed competes very, very well, and it might compete better than other projects. And I think that the water example is an excellent one. My second question is on the table one, and it's the Recreation Program and Operations Recommendations. And as this is a brand new park and rec plan, as you start to get into it, you're like, wow, I, we also need to figure out this. And Councilmember Hill already asked a question about assets. My question to you is, what is the, how will this all be prioritized? You've already talked about staff capacity, and I look at these a dozen items. And they're all we want them tomorrow, but that's not realistic. So will that be prioritized through the goals and objectives conversation? Or how are you capturing these and managing our expectations over the years to come? Because this can't all, maybe it is all happening in the first five years. That would be fantastic.
So those, the.
Do you mean the recommendations specifically for the recreation?
Yeah, Recreation Program Operations Recommendation. So it's programming philosophy, programming plan that builds priorities for the future, additional contracts, staffing plan, comprehensive fee policy. It just goes and goes and goes and goes.
Right. So some of those are actually quite small. Like developing a programming philosophy is maybe a page that staff can put together. Same with building a program plan, that's that is a more robust process. But again, that's something that staff would be able to do in house versus needing to do an RFP and a consultant. So a lot of these are actually quite doable, and we have kind of mapped them out in that five year timeframe and believe we kind of have like one big one each year.
Okay.
And then a few small ones that we'll be addressing as well.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I'm sure there might be other questions that arise, but right now we'll turn to the public. You know, if the public would like to comment on this item, I'm looking into the chambers first. Alice, are you going to come down?
My name is Alice Cochran, and I live in San Rafael, in the Dominican Montecito area. Excuse me, I hadn't planned to speak, but I just wanted to compliment the city on the public involvement. I was part of it. I didn't go to all the meetings, but I heard about other meetings. And I really believe that what we all learned was, we have parks. We have a lot of parks. We have more parks than anybody knew we had. So I think that this public exposure of the fact that we have parks that people might not even have known to use, their little pocket parks that only the neighborhoods might know about. And also the new ones, like at Lock Lowman, they haven't had much exposure. So I really think that part of this was promotion and advertising and maybe a little more of that could be useful, like, have you been to a park recently? And here are 10 parks you might not have known about, something to that effect. So thanks.
Thank you, Alice. Not seeing anyone else in the chambers. Anyone virtually like to comment on the citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
I do see some hands raised.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kate Powers. I was a stakeholder on the Parks and Recreation Planning Committee. And I I also felt like it was a really well done, extensive survey of the existing conditions of the facilities and parks and also of the demographics and and public participation in what was wanted for the future. My family and I have used the parks more extensively in the last couple of years during COVID. And we see them as a part of our commute, an important part of our community. And more broadly, how they're integrated as part of the public realm. For us, it's not only getting to the parks that we sometimes use, but it's also, it's not only the parks, but it's also how we get there. And so to April Miller's comments about looking at all of the public facilities and infrastructure that the public, the city is responsible for is really important. And the parks are an integrated part of the public realm, including the pathways and greenways to get there. I think maintenance of trees is really important. They provide relief during hot weather. I think looking at parks in terms of our climate action plan and their adapt adaptability and flexibility to provide some floodwater relief or things like that. And I really encourage the city to integrate this plan with the Bike Ped Master Plan update that's upcoming. So we have kind of some plans, safe routes to parks, safe routes to schools, safe routes for seniors, et cetera. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Eva Crisanti. I just think it's very interesting to see people so concerned about parks. I mean, it sounds like one of the issues is that you have actually more parks than you knew about to go from the first comment. And it does call into question the rationale for the city of San Rafael to have interned under a freeway a group of, you know, up to 45 or 60 unhoused, medically vulnerable, many elderly people in an area that had no bathrooms, no showers, no hot or cold running water. And there's still no investigation of this. And it it makes me so sad. When I hear your residents call in and and, you know, express their their concerns about this minutia about the park, the various parks, it it makes me wonder if they really understand what the stakes are. And let me explain to you what the stakes are. We just went through a really severe winter, major, major storms. But that's nothing compared to what's possibly coming up next year, possibly the next few years. And it's very likely that climate change is going to really devastate California as we know it. A lot of people who think of themselves as very stable are are not going to have stability that they think they have. Unless we set some sort of baseline for what we're going to provide for people, then, you know, none of the people who call in with these minutia concerns about their parks, they won't have a leg to stand on. It's really important that you get the vital stuff first. And the parks, those are important too. But do.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And one of the, it was a question comment was really the integration with the Bike Ped Master Plans. Maybe you could speak to that. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so we did have some representatives from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee on the Steering Committee for the Master Plan. Kate Powers was one of them. And I do think that, you know, walking, jogging, running, cycling, all came back very, as very high community priorities. So I definitely, I agree that when the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan update, which I believe is coming in the next year or two, it will be important to to make sure those are integrated. And we did consider those in the kind of, in the document review and the looking at previous planning efforts that Lauren spoke to earlier.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the council for additional comments. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you so much for the report. This is very exciting. I grew up in a big city with a lot of apartments, which maybe our city is not as big, but still my district has a lot of apartments. And I know that the parks are the heart of our community. And it makes like a big difference for mental health, to form communities. So I'm really excited to be able to expand all this. Something that, you know, I was thinking about the Bike, the Bike Ped Master Plan or how to get to parks. I'm thinking like electric bikes and maybe like there is some funding coming, setting up like EV chargers, maybe for bikes. That could be maybe another source of funding. So I look forward to looking at all the, you know, the balance, the funding that we have and see what's possible. But I really want to appreciate you for the hard work. It's a, it's a, as Councilmember Kurtz, I mean, sorry. He always mentioned it. It is a very well thought plan, and I really appreciate you the, getting all the community involved as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Yes, just to emphasize that the public outreach was really extraordinary. And seeing this being brought to fruition is is wonderful. And I can't, I'm delighted to support it and we'll vote for it at the probita.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, RHAA, and all the other consultants that came together to make this happen. I'll tell a little bit of a story here. One of the first things that happened when I joined the council in beginning of 2021 is I got to sit down with former Director Andrade Wax. And this was one of the things that, in the many hours that I spent with her, she gave so much time to me to really explain a lot of the the programs that are inside of the, inside of the department. It's it's pretty extensive. And she was explaining the importance of having a park and rec master plan. And I had the privilege to to serve on the selection committee and ultimately select RHAA and their proposal. It is, I will just want to just say, this has come to fruition in a way that I think the way she articulated the vision, which is we have engagement with the community about what we actually have in front of us. The fact that we know what our inventory is and what's not just behind us in present, but what's in the future, this expression of what that is is very important. I just want to call out to just all the folks in the community that engaged, not just city staff, but the I just had to count here CPRMP Steering Committee is almost 30 people, if not a little more. Plus, in addition to all the survey respondents. So thank you for making this a robust engagement with the community and for having this expression of where we are and where we're going.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
I echo all the great comments. Thank you for the work. I think master plans sometimes can be those things that are, you know, done and then put on the shelf. But this clearly is integrated now with so much of the work that we're going to do. And I appreciate the the call out that this isn't the last time we're going to see this. We're going to see projects coming forward that are going to tie back to this plan and its its relationship with so many of the other departments and things that we're working on. So it really is a very central piece of all the work for the city. So thank you so much for the work. I'm looking forward to moving forward. And there we go.
Thank you. And I'll just build on those comments and gratitude. A year and a half long process started with previous Director Andrade Wax and to have it here before us, and thank you, RHAA, thank you, Lauren, thank you, Taikian, to help guide the discussion, the community engagement. I mean, this is the way that we want to do projects, the way we want to do engagement in the city of San Rafael. Everyone has an opinion about a park. Everybody does. So how do you capture that variety of opinions and enable us to go forward? And you did things and your staff did things, pop ups in the park on a Saturday morning. So the people that were naturally there enjoying the park had the opportunity to weigh in. That's the type of creative thinking. So it's not just people who know how to access City Hall or who wear the squeaky wheels. It's actually going beyond and really having in depth input. And that manifested in this fantastic plan. We will have choices in the future or prioritization. We'll have conversations about funding. We all recognize we never have enough resources to do everything that we want to do, but with this, we have a clear strategy forward. And congratulations on having that first plan. How long have we been incorporated? 150 plus years. So we were well overdue to really recognize the resources that we have for both the present day as well as the future planning. So kudos to you and your team, as well as Director Miller, who during your presentation, she's weighing in as well, again, very much across departmental. So thank you. We look forward to having this come to fruition in the years ahead. I will ask for a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for the citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Vice Marriott Enzalotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you. And I do also feel that Catherine Kufa and Craig Barumay should certainly get some acknowledgement of them as well. As a consultant, this is fun for me. I love doing this type of stuff, but I especially love working with staff who love what they're doing and who know how to get things done. So this master plan could not have happened without those two.
Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate that. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is appointment of Kristina Lilovich to city manager. I know that our city attorney will be making the presentation. I know that our city attorney will be making uh the presentation. And we can all just take a big, deep breath. This is a really exciting moment. And I will turn it over to you, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I've been looking forward to this moment. Very pleased to be uh delivering this staff report this evening where the council will be presented uh for adoption and employment agreement with Christine Lilovich to be the next city manager of San Rafael. In early October, Jim Schutz, the gentleman seated to my left, our current city manager, announced his plans for retirement after an extraordinary career here at the helm of our city uh for what will end up being eight years uh when he concludes his service uh to San Rafael this summer. It's been uh tremendous working alongside Jim. Uh, he will get his flowers uh on another evening. So I'd like to move on now to uh speak about Christine. Uh, but first the process. Uh, the council decided, uh, it was decided that uh with a decision that's this big for a city, for a city council, because of the um significance of the city manager role, the magnitude of the responsibility, that um it would be appropriate, despite the fact that the city was aware of a very strong internal candidate, to conduct a nationwide search, and that's exactly what occurred. And I can tell you, having uh had the opportunity to um review all the resumes that were provided, we had a uh tremendous job done by our um uh executive recruiter, uh Gary Phillips, the other Gary Phillips of Bob Marion Associates, that the uh group of candidates against whom Christine competed was uh really uh strong. And those who were brought in for interview, all are very talented individuals um with tremendous experience. And so she really competed uh against the best. Um, I uh was very proud of Christine. Uh, I told her after her interview that I attended because um you know, there's moments in life where we have the opportunity to uh have a moment that we've been preparing for. Uh, in her case, for, you know, really her whole career. And um those are challenging moments. And sometimes uh people can um falter uh when uh the moment comes. But Chris- Christine uh just hit all her marks during that interview and um really was able to display the degree of excellence and competence that she's brought throughout her career. Uh, and then uh to us here in the city uh during uh what will be approximately eight years as assistant city manager, because she came on shortly after Jim uh was promoted and he selected her to be uh his assistant. So it is an exciting moment for San Rafael. Jim's assembled an extraordinary uh director team that um Christine uh I know is so um uh happy and pleased uh to be uh taking on and there with her uh at her side as she begins in the role. Uh, I'm very happy to be uh continuing on as city attorney and looking forward to working with Christine in her new role. Uh, here to do anything I can to help her uh as she uh begins. And um, and we've talked about how despite working here uh for so many years, it's about so much more than just um moving into the next door office or moving across the council chambers to be the person who will be seated to my left at upcoming meetings. And so I know she's been thinking a lot about how she's going to make that transition um and that she'll have more to tell us about that in the weeks and months ahead. But um I, I could go on about all of her uh qualifications. The council is well familiar with them. She's highly educated. Uh, she did go to the University of Southern California for her uh degree, her master's degree. Could make some comments about USC, but it's good to get a master's degree. So I think that's great too, along with Rutgers, uh which is another fine institution of higher learning. Um, but her um, her experience is what we need right now. And uh I'm very pleased uh to um at this moment be presenting this contract, which we worked on. Um, there's uh one little detail I should report that the assistant city attorney mentioned that I didn't quite clarify. It was under some discussion. There's a um a four fifty-seven benefit that talks about the maximum uh that the IRS allows. But it was discussed and agreed that that does not include the uh over fifty catch-up provision. And because that wasn't uh made explicit in this draft, I thought it important to recite that on the record. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have about the terms of the agreement. And um that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. And I know there'll be comments, but we're going to first start with questions. Uh, any questions, Vice Mayor?
Um, I don't really have any questions. I think I asked all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, questions? That's real. Okay, not seen any questions. We will open it up to public comment. Anyone in the public in the chambers like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone? Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on this item?
I do see a hand raised.
Hey, good evening. This is Barry Toronto. When I uh read Jim Stutz's um snapshot, uh which I hope that Christine will take over and write just as well, I immediately had to provide public comment while watching the Warriors game. It's halftime and they're hi- behind by just a few points. Anyway, um, I uh want to say as a fellow Trojan, you couldn't have picked a better candidate. When I saw that, that uh her alma mater for her master's degree, I immediately had to call in and say you made a very good choice, considering that the president of the university is a woman. They just changed the, the uh athletic field to Alston Felix Field. And the w- women are number one in tronkin field and water polo in the country. So you couldn't have picked a better choice. I am proud, uh fellow Trojan, will be taking over as, as the head of San Rafael's government. And I wish Christine well and I hope to be able to meet her eventually. Right on.
Thank you, Mr. Tarantino.
Thank you. This is Eva Crisanti. I, I wanted to note Mr. Tarantino's uh comments. Um, and that pretty much sums it up for the city of San Rafael. Uh, the clubbiness, the lack of credentials and the complete um um refusal to look at the corruption of the city square in the eye. Uh, you just saw the um city attorney um who uh, you know, brought real disgrace upon the city uh with his mismanagement of the beating of Mateo. Um, and he is praising the outgoing city manager, the corrupt outgoing city manager and welcoming the corrupt internal hire who will be the new um corrupt city manager. I mean, it's not just the beating of Mateo. It's the police-run internment camp, the abusive and deadly police-run internment camp that where you held medically vulnerable people under a freeway. This was all overseen by your city attorney, your, your council, your mayor. Um, you know, your city manager and your police department. There's still no investigation of this. And here you are trying to behave as if this was all peachy. And now you've got um, and, and now you have um Mr. Tarantino uh calling in saying like, you know, this is all great because uh USC go Trojans. And I can't, I can't think of a comment that better expresses how completely brainless um Marin County is, but in particular, um how corrupt this city is. And I, I, you know, I ask that you take a closer look. I, I ask that you ask for an external investigation, um not only of what happened to Mateo, but how you managed to put together such an abusive internment camp for unhoused people, majority black and Latino camp, by the way. Um, I don't know how you got away with
Hi there. This is Lori Shifrin, and I can't tell you how happy I am that Christine is going to be our new city manager. I certainly don't hope it's because she's female, because she is so qualified more than being female or whatever else. So for the other two people that were just saying that, that's sort of crazy. I love that you picked her. I think she is going to do a fabulous job. And my cheeks hurt from smiling. Take care and good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Lori.
I see no other hands raised. We'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for their own comments. Vice Mayor.
So I couldn't be happier. Um, I'm really, I'm really happy that we actually went and did the search outside the city, because I think it was important to have that perspective. Um, as our uh city attorney mentioned, we have like very strong candidates. And I was very, very, very impressed with the level of preparation that Christine had, uh the qualifications. And honestly, I think you've been like assistant to, to our amazing current city manager for the last eight years. And I think he's going to leave the city in very good hands. So I'm really excited to welcome you as our new city manager. And um, you know, best of luck and we'll be here to support you in any way that we can. So I feel we are very lucky. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Christine, it's an absolute delight. Um, you will be my third city manager that um I have um served with. And I know from history that it's the foundation that's laid down in all those years in knowing all of the nooks and crannies and, you know, the sign shop and where all those little parks are and all those details. Um, brought together um with um your heart and compassion and intellect that you will bring on to the city and the dedication on that you will um follow in the footsteps of those who um went before you um and make the su- uh the, the continue, to continue to be the great city that it is by attracting the great people that on every day are out there on our streets and in our parks and everywhere um doing great things for the people of San Rafael. So very excited to begin the, 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 the next era.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Uh, very happy. Thank you. I don't take for granted that this was a slam dunk. Cause I mean, you, you approached this process as if you were coming in clean and, and which is fantastic. Um, and you also chose us as much as we've chose you. And really, really respect all that you have done. You've taught me so much coming into the city. And you have very strong ties here. Um, and you truly, truly care about San Rafael. And I look forward to working with you and, and know you will always have the best interest of San Rafael and the San Rafael community um as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this, this position to be the city manager, you're the executive of the city. And the, the qualities that I think are most important um is, are, some of them are very easy to name around command of strategy and operations. Um, understanding municipal government, which is, there's a lot to it, as you well know. But you have dedicated your career to gaining this experience. But there, there are many parts of the job description that I think embodied that I want to name, which is the level of investment you've made in the city and in the community that came through and continues to come through irrespective of the interview. But also the trust and the relationships you've built within the city already and also with the community. And what are very important are the relationships across the region. Um, so to me, it's very clear why you, you will be the city manager of this city. And I'm honored to serve with you. So thank you for wanting to step into this very wonderful role.
Thank you. This is one of the most important decisions that we make as a council, because the city manager oversees uh everything and works with the council. There are three audiences with whom you work as a city manager. Internal, the council, and then the community itself. So internal, as you said, city manager Schutz has assembled a fantastic group of department heads. Many are who are in the chambers today. And continuing to lead them, you've been a part of the architect of together San Rafael. And one thing that really set you apart from the other candidates we talked to is you understand the uniqueness of San Rafael and how we want to continue to evolve as a local government and to do things a little bit differently here, using uh maximizing the resources that we have and really continuing to engage the community in that. So you have the internal audience. You have the council audience. You've already heard accolades from everyone up here. It was a unanimous decision uh that was made to, to bring you forward. So obviously you have good relationships and you have good working relationships with the council. And the last part is the community, and that's almost the hardest one. It's relationship building across all the different sectors, uh be it community organizers or uh grassroots coalition groups or nonprofits or business. And you have been building those relationships. And that was something that really uh came through in the conversation uh with you about what you have done here. And those are really important. City government can't do it all alone. We just don't have the resources. We don't have the capacity. We absolutely have to have these partners. And you have built those and will continue, you will continue to lean into those. It's a challenging time to be a public servant, as we all can speak to. And we are so grateful, as Councilmember Kurtz just said, that you have chosen us as well. We know that you could get snapped up by a city anywhere in California, probably in the US. And we're delighted that you wanted to continue your career here at the next level. You live here, you're invested here, you raising your family here, and you love the city as much as we all do sitting here on the dais. So with that, I know that I usually ask for a motion, but I am going to use mayor prerogative. And I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution appointing Christina Lilovich city manager effective June first, twenty twenty-three and approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement.
I'm second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Edens Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Congratulations. And we have one more item on our agenda. We'd love to like, uh, it's the San Rafael successor agency. We have a consent calendar of one item, which is the investment report. Uh, anyone like to hold the item on? Nope, not seeing that. I will open the public comment on the successor agency. Not seen anyone in the chambers. Anyone online like to comment on this consent agenda for the successor agency?
I see no hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and request a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, agency secretary, please conduct the roll.
Member Bushy.
Aye.
Member Hill.
Aye.
Member Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Chair Edens Galati.
Aye.
Chair Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.